Welcome to the Hamilton County Commission Staff Meeting. November 28, 2023. We'll start with introductions on the dais.
Chrissy Ruchel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Herbie, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summeral-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon. I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President, Alisha Reese. Welcome. Today, we have our budget hearing. And I would like to open up the hearing and see if anybody's here to... Before they do it, I would like to open it up, Mr. Aludo, and then we will open it up if anyone's here to speak on the budget.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam President. I do have a very brief presentation to walk through for the purpose of the hearing. I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to defer on it. I will defer to the Board. If you think it's good to get it into the record, I'm happy to do it. It's shorter than the...
Yeah, I think we need a refresher. Yeah, go ahead and some people watching.
All right. I see I've got the clicker, so I'll walk through this fairly quickly, Commissioners. But this is, again, a hearing to discuss the 2024 Administrator's Recommended Budget. For those watching at home, again, just a caveat that this is not the county's 2024 budget. This is the Administration's Recommended Budget, which is now technically in the hands of the Commissioners, and they can adapt it, modify it according to their policy vision ultimately to pass a budget by the close of this year. A little bit about the budget as recommended. It is in total $1.3 billion. The general fund portion of that, the general fund, again, for folks who may not be familiar with... Again, for folks who may not be familiar with municipal or county government is essentially the main checkbook of the county. It's where most general operational expenses come from, is recommended at $394.5 million. The recommended budget themes, we tried to craft a budget this year that first and foremost supports mandated and core services as well as Board policy priorities. They continues to progress on a lot of the major capital initiatives we have out there. We've got capital initiatives on everything from our parking assets to 911 and emergency management, to the Hamilton County Regional Safety Project. And the county's budget, recommended budget maintains progress on all of those, continues to invest administratively in operations and systems to keep the organization operating well, including facility-related capital projects, leveraging strategic partnerships. A lot of the work we do, as the Board is aware, is done through our partnerships with organizations out in the community. And this budget continues that trend. And I think we've all recognized that we can do more working as a community than we can as any organization alone. And this budget continues to make good on that by using a lot of our organizational partners, be it entities like the Port Authority, Alloy Community Development Fund, those types of things to, those types of organizations to make progress on our major policy goals. Also, under this budget, our levy and sales tax rates remain stable. The recommended balancing approach, the emphasis here was on stability, on sustainability and stability moving into the future to make sure that the budget is one that is sustainable for the long term and not just the short term. We began this process with a roughly $40 million budget gap. It was a larger gap than we had anticipated seeing. We started the process last year with a gap somewhere around $10 million. The gap this year, again, was 40. We ultimately brought that budget into balance through reductions to departmental requests, modest program reductions. But again, not without some level of pain in the organization in terms of where different departments and agencies think they need to be in order to provide the full scope of their mandated service to the public. There's always a healthy tension between what a department asks for and what we ultimately recommend back to the Board. In the end, though, I think we've landed on what I think is a good balance between what the request was and the reductions worked for most of our departments. Just again, this is more of an educational item for those who may be watching. The general fund budget consists of everything from public safety, the sheriff's office, the coroner's office, 911, the courts, the elections, the county commissioners, administration, HR, the auditor's office, purchasing, county facilities, just a lot of the general operations of county government, including some of our social services like addiction services, reentry, and veteran services. The all-funds recommended budget, again, as I indicated, is $1.3 billion. The two largest components of that being the general fund at $394 and the, and JFS at $314 million. The general fund total sources, just a little bit about where your tax dollars are, come from. So, sales tax is the primary driver of county revenues at roughly 100, projected at $155 million or almost 40% of the county's general fund revenue stream. This is probably a... In historical, thinking historically, the starkest contrast between revenue sources that I can recall where we are much more reliant on sales tax than we have been in the past. And that's by design. The Board increased the sales tax by a quarter of a cent several years ago, so it's natural you would see this. And it was necessary in order to continue to preserve the level of services that the county is required to provide to the public. Total uses, over 70% of the county's general fund dollars go to public safety and judicial functions, with the remainder being split between general government functions, economic development, public works. And below 2% of our general fund resources go towards debt service. In terms of the general fund reserve, what we are projecting by the end of the year is a general fund reserve at around $61 million, which is, at this point, looking at roughly 17.4%. Our recommended budget consists of also the restricted fund budget. So, when you think about the all-funds budget, it includes general fund. It also includes restricted funds, restricted funds or anything outside of the general fund. The funds that go to pay for operations in the convention district, parking operations, stadium operations, all of our levy funds, like the zoo levy, developmental disability services, senior services, children's services, other funds like the indigent care levy, the auto title fund, a lot of court special funds, like the court automation fund. There's a lot of funds out there that are restricted by nature, either by law or by policy, that are not used as general fund resources. And this, the all-funds budget includes those in addition to the general fund. The policy priorities of the budget, public safety, economic and community development, social services, environment and public infrastructure, as well as operating and effective government. And I think through these policy priorities, we tried to hit on, again, the mandated services of county government as well as those board policy priorities that we have seen the Board espouse through policy direction or just action of the Board over the past several years. Starting with maintaining a safe community, the budget funds, and I'm not going to go into excruciating detail in all of these. I just want to give a broad brush. I'd rather just get to Board questions and discussion. But if there's any questions, feel free to ask. But the budget funds, the sheriff's office, the 911 office, the 911 EMA consolidation project that we are doing, the budget right sizes, the prosecutor's office and the juvenile court office, given some funding and personnel issues that we had faced in those offices over the past several years. The budget leans heavily into modernizing sheriff's technology in the sheriff's office with an approach on addressing real-time crime, the ability to address crime in real time, the coroner's office, as well as a retention of the $5 detail rate for 911. This, that's a dollar, a dollar amount that is paid by every jurisdiction, every time a resident in their jurisdiction calls 911. So, in a fictional community in Hamilton County, if there were 1,000 calls for 911, that community would pay $5,000 to the communication center. That fee had been up as high as close to 20 or slightly over $20 in the past. So, the reduction of the fee to $5 and the maintenance of that at $5 ensures that communities have over $3 million more that they can put into public safety operations in their community as opposed to paying the county for 911 services. Economic development and community development, the Board has leaned heavily into this over the past several years, especially in partnership with a lot of our surrounding first suburban communities. Everything from the new community revitalization grant and community impact program that was implemented a couple of years ago. This budget retains that program. Site readiness and land banking continues the funding through ARPA for our affordable housing activities through the Cincinnati Development Fund, large and small event grants as put in place by the Board a couple of years ago. It also continues with broadband and Wi-Fi infrastructure grant programming, continuation of our Office of Small Business, parking operations, our professional sports stadia are all funded through these efforts. The Board last year commissioned a youth sports study, which is currently ongoing and will wrap up in the early part of 2024. This budget continues funding for that, as well as funding for bike trails and convention district revitalization. The county, counties in Ohio do a lot with social services, including the funding of job and family services, which includes things like children's services, kinship care, public assistance, adult protection and prevention services. It funds all of our addiction response and mental health services, including all of the grants that we have gotten for addiction response assistance, as well as the One Ohio dollars that are now flowing through counties in Ohio. It funds all of our 513 relief operations, including the operation of the 513 relief bus, our Office of Youth, which we'll hear a little bit more about later this afternoon, the Inspire and Beyond Your Imagination programs, the senior utility and home repair programs, and the regional safety complex development as well. Environment and infrastructure, the budget continues to fund our oversight of the Metropolitan Sewer District, maintains all the roads and bridges and sidewalks that the engineer is responsible for, all the recycling and waste diversion efforts of the Department of Environmental Services, watershed management, stormwater, as well as fire hydrant maintenance throughout the county. And finally, some items that are not in those programmatic areas but that attention is warranted in the budget include salary adjustments for county staff. This year, recommended at 3.5%. All of the continued talent attraction and retention initiatives of our human resources department includes some funding for continuous improvement efforts throughout the county, our ongoing diversity inclusion initiatives, including continuation of the disparity study initiatives, some investment in technology and systems, for instance, the forensic information management system out of the coroner's office, and licensing of a new procurement system, as well as funding for facilities and general capital maintenance of county buildings. In terms of budget risks, there's always risk with any budget. Slowdown in economic growth is something that we could see that could impact our revenue stream. Inflation is something that we have seen in recent years, especially as it relates to county construction projects. Wage pressure in all of our county operations continues to pressure our revenues as well as just ensuring that we keep departments within their, within the recommended budget levels. And finally, some state action. And we know there are various things being considered at the state level that could have a significant impact on our general fund budget, including the public defender level of reimbursement, which at one point in time we thought was going to be closer to 100%. Now, we're looking more in the 80, 85% range. There is legislation at the state that might affect how property taxes are, the amount of property taxes that are collected, which could put some downward pressure on our collection of property taxes, as well as some discussion at the state about increasing the employer contribution for OPERS, which also would have a substantive impact on the county general fund. And that is the entirety of my presentation today, Commissioners. We do have the budget online at hamiltoncountyohio.gov/budget. We do, we are working to schedule a couple of additional hearings. I don't have the dates listed here because I think we're still in some discussion about the precise dates and places on those. But folks can stay in tune with the budget by going to this site on our website. And this will update as we get all of those finalized. So, with that, Madam President, I will turn it back to you for any questions and discussion.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up, Vice President Dreehouse. Any questions?
Well, there are no public comments?
Yeah, there will be. We always, we always open it up.
Okay. No, I'm anxious to hear the public comment. Thank you.
Okay, great. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. I have a few comments about Jeff's report. First of all, I'm really excited that it's balanced and there is a reserve. We maintain a reserve. And the sustainability aspect, we, not only with our programming, but also the ability to, those new programs, to continue those. But I also noticed, Jeff, on the satellite office that will be in Forest Park is not mentioned at all in here. And I think it probably needs, it's a new idea, a fresh idea. And we are going to have to put some funding into it, and I'm sure you're aware of that. But I noticed that EMA and 911 was mentioned for public safety. But if we could add the satellite office, that would be great. And I think when you began your presentation, you said we began our process with a $40 million gap. But I don't think that's, I won't say it's not accurate, but we didn't have a gap. But what happened as people start asking for more things, it ended up resulting in a gap. So, I think we need to give ourselves some credit and say that, you know, because of the input from different departments, we ended up with a $40 million gap, which you were able to rectify through a draft budget. And lastly, I keep looking at this wage. It says performance-based wage, 3.5%. And I mentioned the last time, it's actually a 1.5% wage increase with the other resulting percentage would be because of performance. And I made the comment, and I don't know where my colleagues are, and I'm not asking right now, but I believe we should do a 3% COLA across the board because a 1% is nothing with this cost of living and inflation going up. And I keep seeing in your presentation a 3.5% performance-based wage. And I'm just submitting to my colleagues that we do across the board increase for our staff rather than a performance base and a 1% wage. So, that's all I had. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Aludo.
Not to respond to the Commissioners' comments because we'll obviously have discussions throughout this process. But I did just want to note a change in the presentation. Not quite sure how this happened, but the budget, I noticed it when I was going through the slides, but the budget reserve slide, I think it showed the 2023 number, not the projected 2024 number. So, it showed a reserve of 17% projected. It's actually projected at 14.4% by the end of '24. We didn't, somehow the 2024 bar got cut off in the slide. So, it just didn't want people to have a misrepresentation of what the projection on the reserve is. So, I'm sorry to interject that.
We wanted to keep the other number. It was nicer.
That's right.
Did you have anything else?
No, nothing else.
I had a couple of things. Of course, you know, this is not the final budget. And I know that myself and my colleagues have some different things that we'd like to see. And I know we're going to go back and forth on that. However, I want to bring attention to a specific part because there's been a lot in the news, and it's a very important subject matter and group of people. And as I'm making this comment, if anybody here for the budget hearing, you can fill out a card so you'll be ready right after I get done with my comments. And that is the issue of veterans. And I'm going to keep saying it, so people might be seeing it for the first time and don't quite understand it. But there's a Veterans Services Commission in Hamilton County. They are not controlled necessarily by this Board. There is, we don't make the Board appointments currently at all. And they are part of the budget. Now, my understanding, and I've asked Mr. Aludo because I'm learning a lot about this. When I first got here, one of the things I said initially when we have to turn in our own budget, each of us had our own budgets, and I wanted more money for veterans. And Mr. Aludo indicated to me that the Veterans Services Commission has to ask for the money. And I kept wondering, and I said, "That's weird. Why wouldn't they ask for more money to help more veterans?" But they never would. And so, then when this thing exploded on television and started to put some attention to it, we also found that Veterans Services Commission had not come before this Board. And I know they ain't came since I was here three years. And Commissioner Dumas indicated they hadn't been here since she was here. So, they hadn't come before this Board. They hadn't given us any reports on how the money is being spent, et cetera, until now. And we invited them, and I said, "Mr. Aludo, I want to invite them to come because they're the only group that's getting in this budget, one of the only groups that never had to face us, even though it's a restricted fund. Other restricted funds come to us." So, anyway, they ended up coming because of all the media. And the executive director did not come. And the executive director makes more than a commissioner, $123,000. But I said, "If they can't come and they're not feeling well, at least have the chairman of the Board. Somebody got to come over here because there's some serious allegations out there." And I thought we were, they were helping seniors. I didn't know they wasn't really helping that many seniors. So, anyway, they came over for the first time to this Board meeting. And they came, and the executive director couldn't make it. They had the, we had the chairman of the Board, and there was a presentation being made. And that was on a Thursday, and a lot of veterans was in here, packed the place out. Well, because we were meeting on Thursday, they ran and gave us some packets, I think on Wednesday, reports that probably should have been coming in every year, reports that superseded my time even being on the commission. They went all the way back to 2019. These had already been turned in. But they went from 19 to the current. And so, a lot of times when you do that, you can't read the reports because you got, you know, not a lot of time. But I read them. And in those reports, we found that some areas that are allowed to be funded for veterans were not being funded. Eyeglasses was at $0. Pharmacy help was at $0. Rental was, I think, at $13,000 or $14,000. And I know there's more people need help. We did $100 million. Utilities was at $2,000-some dollars, very, very small numbers. And then the fact that we got 42,000 veterans, and that doesn't even include their families in Hamilton County. And we're helping 400 veterans, 500 one-year, 300. We doing bus passes in Butler County. I just saw an ad. I'm going to put it up on Thursday. Oh, I don't know, Channel 12, an ad came on, big old bus coming out of, I think it was Warren County or Butler County, red, white, and blue, and got the stars and everything. And they taking their veterans straight to the appointment, straight to the hospital. Then they had a little SUV running around. I said, "Man, they got a bus and a SUV, and their county is smaller than ours." And so, then we said, "Well, Mr. Aludo, give more money to them." Because one of the veterans came and said, "In the state law, if we give 10% more than they requested the year before, now this Board can make appointments." We said, "Well, that sound pretty good." Well, then Mr. Aludo told me that we can't just give them 10% more. They have to ask for it. So, then I kept wondering, "Why wouldn't they ask for it?" Well, it seems to me that they kept the number real low so that the county commission can't do nothing, can't make no Board appointments. So, they keep their ask is low. And in this budget, even with all that we went through, the ask is still, this is our budget, and we got a veterans section, and the ask is still only $1 million, still low. And why is it low? Because they don't want the county commission to make any Board appointments. That's the only thing I can think of. But they gave themselves a 4% raise, but wouldn't give more to help the veterans. So, I, this section here keeps us at the status quo. What is status quo? Not that many veterans being helped, $0 for glasses. If you couldn't give, you gave zero last time, you get the same budget. It's going to be zero this time. If you gave $0 for pharmacy last time, you get the same budget. It's going to be $0 for pharmacy this time. If the last budget, you only helped 400 veterans, didn't even do 10%. Not even 10%. You give them this budget, it's going to be 400 veterans. So, if I support this budget as is, then we become part of the problem because now it has been brought to our attention. It has been out in the open now. And so, anyway, they came and they said they thought they would do something different. And they had a person up and said, "This person has been voted will be the interim director, the African-American male." And they said, "We're going to do something different." Well, they came with the same request for budget, so that's not nothing different. And that was on a Thursday, okay? Now, Thursday, it went to a Monday with this, this article comes out. "Hamilton County Veterans Services Executive Director Takes Back the Rains." And now going to work from home. That's on Thursday. We came here packed on Thursday. This came out. This happened on Monday. Told the guy, "Thank you for your services. You back to being demoted. Thank you for standing in." That's a major slap in the face to not only this Board, but a slap in the face to Hamilton County veterans. And if we don't do anything, we say, "Oh, well, we going to go to their meeting on Wednesday." What we going to their meeting for? Here's the budget. They asked for the same amount. We want to give them more, but they have to ask for more. They not asking for more. We want them to do more, but they won't ask for more. We want to appoint more people on their boards, but they won't ask for more so we can do that. So, we got to do something different. Then I wake up today and find out it's a lawsuit, and this is embarrassing for Hamilton County. Here's the quote, "A roach has more respect." Veterans Sues Hamilton County Veterans Commission Over Treatment. It's still got the word "Hamilton County." Butler County doing better than us. Warren County running with vans and buses and all of that. And we got the most veterans, 42,000, including their families. And this is the thing, "A roach has more respect." And we think we going to run over. We'll go to their meeting and see if we can work with it. We brought them here to work with them. They came in our face. They gave us their report, $0 for glasses, $0 for pharmacy. A bus got some bus tokens. We with transfers. We running with transfers. And then here come Warren County and Butler County. They coming with first-class service with a bus. We want to give them more money, but according to Mr. Aludo, and if I'm wrong, Mr. Aludo, you need to let them know. You told me. I can't give them no more money. They got to request the money, and they, here's their request, the same as last year. How do we get some people on their Board? We to get a request. There's somebody, "Well, let's call up to the State House." Oh, my God. I've been up at the State House. Them bills sit forever. Ain't nothing happening out the State House. The budget has been passed at the State. Nothing's coming unless it's in the budget, a capital budget or operating budget. Ain't nothing going to, in fact, one of the reporters, I think, a reporter went to the State people, and they tried to throw it back on the county, up to the State. They said, "Well, the county has to deal with that." They said, "Well, we want to do inspection of the records. We can't do no inspection of the records. They got to let us in." The man's working from home. We said, "Hire some more people, hire number two so they can run things." They don't want no number two. So, I have, in my budget proposal, I'm going to present a resolution. I like for it to get passed. I like for it to get passed. And I've put it out there long enough for my colleagues. If there's something they want to add, I'm willing to open that up to add. But it's time for us to have an embusment. We got an office of everything with all kind of people working we add. We need an office of veteran affairs that have an embusment over here that'll be under our Board that will be going to not just those meetings, go to those meetings and go to VA meetings, not just VA meetings, but also be out and promoting and marketing to our folks to connect them, not just with their services, but with other services and be able to be our liaison. And be able to be our liaison. That person, it can't be somebody, oh, they already working and they serve time, and we gonna let them go to, this ain't just going to a few meetings. This is really being an embusment to represent our county. It's a shame, we don't have nothing big, nothing big in Hamilton County that we are part of. Then take some of those dollars, if they don't want the bus and the van, I'm okay, we have time, we don't have to, we'll have to, we'll help use our 513 relief bus if they don't want to, you get a bus. But also, we need to have a major event. Now, we own Paycor Stadium. And we need to have a major event. It could be on the plaza, it could be on the inside, but that embusment would be planning it. It'll be part of one of, we get three community days a year, supposedly, we ain't been using them, in the contract for the Bengal Stadium. Let's use one of those days, do it in April, we not doing it during the season. We not doing it during the season, we're doing offseason. When the place is sitting empty and we still be in charge with all the bills. And have put some money in this budget that will also pay for that day, like we had the office, uh, small business office day. And then this is for the veterans and the families, and we got different people come there with their booths, we're taking applications on the spot, we got everybody, the VA, we've got the DAV, we got all the people there, we got some entertainment, some music, some fun for the kids and the, and the families, so it's appreciation and resource at the same time. And so that's what I'm going to be introducing on Thursday. Now, why do I want to have it now? Somebody said, oh, just throw it in the budget. No, we can't just throw it in the budget. We got to make a profound statement about veterans. There's too much confusion. Everywhere I go, they stopping us. What are y'all doing to us? And we got to explain and understand, no, we gonna make a statement. So I wanted to bring that up because the budget shows their intentions. If you ask for the same money you had last year, you gonna get the same results. You don't want to ask for 10% more because you don't want us making any appointments. That's why you stay real low with your number. And we trying to get you money, but you don't want it. Calling up to Columbus, and we in December, and they getting ready to go out of office, it'll be forever. It's a good, it's a good tactic if we're trying to just push it along. I ain't trying to push it along. We done brought you here, we done said we want to work with you, uh, we said, let's get together, we said we got the money, and bottom line is, you showed us somebody, you claim you gonna make a change. An interim guy. You told me you was gonna do more marketing. They said all that. But this is what you said after you left us. Hamilton County Veteran Service Executive Director Takes Back the Rains, We'll Work From Home. Basically, they gave us the middle finger and went on. And we can't do that to the veterans. So that's why I'm upset. That's why I think we should have a resolution, and I will be having it on, on as a by leave, and hopefully, we can have some positive results. But I wanted to highlight that because in this particular budget, it's the same amount of money that they request year after year after year. And it's just not acceptable to the veterans. So wanted to highlight that, and like I said just today, I guess it's a lawsuit, a couple that's been in the military, dealt with them, and they claim they've been treated, they feel like a roach has more respect. That's their words, not my words. And the way they were treated, and they're suing because of they were treated, it says, they were, it says here, they were treated like, quote, unwelcome trespassers. And so a great deal of what? Rudeness, hostility by the employees and the staff. And then other words in the complaint says, "The visit was painful, agonizing, demeaning, humiliating." We got to do better. So anyway, that's what I wanted to say about the budget. I have some other things, uh, there's some good, a lot of good things in this budget, uh, but that Veteran Services piece is just not acceptable to me. I'm gonna open it up, but we have any cards for any speakers? Anybody want to speak?
We have no speakers cards, but we're checking.
Okay, let's check Zoom. Are we on Zoom today? Okay. Anybody on Zoom that wants to? No one's on Zoom. Okay, all right, well, I guess our first public hearing, what's our, I don't have my schedule in front of me, but what do you all have the schedule for the next one? Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. No, 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 schedule. What's our, when is our next budget hearing?
Our next budget hearing is the 5th.
Next budget hearing is December the 5th. Y'all get the word out, December the 5th, at what time?
During the staff meeting, 1 o'clock.
1 o'clock, right here, December the 5th, the, uh...
Then we have one more.
Then we have an evening one, at the 12th?
We have an evening one on the 12th, um, but we're not sure on the location.
Okay, we're working on location, okay. So December the 5th is online, Mr. Ludo, is, is it online? People can see the budget?
The 5th is, I know there's still been conversation about the 12th, so...
I'm talking about the budget yourself.
Oh, the budget absolutely is online, yes.
The budget is online, so you all can go and look at the budget and then give us your thoughts. Next is item number two, property tax.
Yeah, Commissioners, uh, this is, uh, just a, uh, kind of a placeholder item. Uh, annually, the board must vote on a property tax rebate, um, that is funded from the, uh, Hamilton County Riverfront Sales Tax Fund. Um, the administration makes a recommendation on that every year. A presentation was provided, I believe, at last week's, either last week or the prior week, on the administration's recommendation, uh, this year, which was recommended at 12.8 million or 12.4% of revenues. Um, this particular session was just set to provide the board with any additional, uh, opportunity for additional comments or questions. Uh, the, uh, auditor's office requires a, a vote on this item, uh, by December 1st. Our next meeting is, is November the 30th. So the idea would be for this to come by leave on, uh, Thursday, the 30th. Um, at this point, however, if there are any questions, comments, et cetera, I would defer to the board. I don't have a formal presentation or anything today, uh, was just an opportunity for any, uh, final questions or comments prior to Thursday's prospective vote.
Okay, I'll open it up, Vice President.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Uh, yeah, we've already talked about the recommendation from the administration, from Budget Office regarding the PTR. Um, I'm comfortable with the formula that has now been in place for the last, what, two years? Am I right? Last year and this year. Um, because what we were trying to do last year, and we've tried to do this in the past, is try to figure out how much we need to have in the reserve balance, and what is a prudent reserve, uh, given some of the pressures on this fund, like debt service, operating, capital, emergency repairs, got a lot of strains on this particular fund, and the backstop fund is the general fund. And none of us want, well, I'll speak for myself, I don't want to go into the general fund to maintain something that we've got, uh, sales tax for, uh, given some of the constraints of the general fund that we just talked about. Um, so we've got this formula where we have an 85% reserve, and so the idea is to create a formula where we, we apply that, and then it responds to the revenue that's coming into the county related to the rebate that goes to the taxpayers. And so as the revenues increase, the rebate increases, as, and, and that's what's happening this year. So the good news for the taxpayer is that because we're bringing in more revenue through the sales tax fund, the, uh, property tax rebate is going to go up this year, um, compared to last year. And so I'm, I'm glad to know that, um, I'm comfortable again with this formula. I hope that we continue, or I will at least ask the administration to continue to apply the formula moving forward, so that each year, we can make a judgment call, uh, as to whether or not we want to continue to use that formula to guide our, our, you know, our recommendations here or not. Um, but as I said, I'm comfortable with it, and I think, um, that the taxpayers are getting more this year than last year is, is the good news as a result of some of the revenue increases. So that's all I've got. I think I've, I've said more at previous meetings, but I think I'll let it go at that this, this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, of course, the PTR was a, a bad promise, in my opinion, along with the bad lease that we got, uh, with the Bengals. So, um, we're trying to fulfill some of that promise. We could actually say no PTR, uh, but we have not decided to do that. We, there is an increase this year. Um, and in order to provide, as was said earlier, the services that we need, the staff that we need, the reserve that we need, and to have a balanced budget, um, and keep the general fund where it needs to be to supplement all of the needs in the county. Um, I ca, I agree with Administrator's, uh, recommendation of the 12.5 PTR for this time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, I disagree with him. I think if we could, if we have to keep our promise to the NFL Bengal team, and even though we disagree with it, we keeping it, we should keep the promise to the taxpayers, who are the people that we're elected to represent. We're elected to represent the taxpayers, that's who brought us here, the voters. And so what frustrates me is that we tend to err on the side of sometimes business. When a business deal is brought to us, we say, oh, we gotta do it. And we figure it out, we're creative, we do creative financing, we figure it out. But on the taxpayer's side, we then, we're not as creative. Now, I want to get something straight, because when I came, I thought the same thing. There is no such thing as a restricted fund for the, for the stadiums. The Ohio Revised Code has not put together a restricted fund. We behave ourselves in a restricted fund, but that's self, it's really, all of it is general fund, it's a sales tax. And technically, it could all go into one pot. It is not a restricted fund. But we choose to, people before us chose to, and I don't necessarily just go along with everything that was before, just because it was done before doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. We have to think in context, we say, oh, we're giving more, we not giving anything, really. The taxpayers was told that they were going to get a property tax rollback. It would have never passed. We'd never have these stadiums. And so even though none of us was here when the stadium, uh, deal was done, and that's a contract, it's not what was voted on by the, was voted on was the bill. The contract was a whole lot of extra stuff that we put on, that not us, but that previous Hamilton County officials put on. But we're sitting here saying, we gotta honor it, we gotta honor it, there's nothing we can do. But then when it comes to the homeowners and the taxpayers, they were told that, and in fact, in the document, it does say PTR. I usually have it with me, the contract. In the contract, it has, uh, property tax rebate in the contract, in the thing that was passed by prior commissioners. But for some reason, we say, we just, I mean, we're just so broke, we can't do it. But we're that broke, how we doing these big projects? We so broke? How's all these people coming down here, asking us to do these big projects? We never say we broke, we always say, well, we gonna try to figure it out. Now, I want to just put a little bit of realness of my position. Every homeowner receives a reevaluation letter. I can't go nowhere without somebody stopping me mad as I don't know what. This thing done went up. Now, they'll say, well, that doesn't necessarily mean the amount that it went up on the reevaluation is the amount that your taxes are going up, but your taxes are gonna go up. The taxes are going up, one of the highest revaluations in history. Taxes will be going up. And so I just think putting everything, for me, if I'm gonna be pushing affordable house, and I got to make sure the person that got the house can afford to keep the house they got, before I go getting some new people into homes. And I just think that at a time right now, when the economy is, is tight, people are tight, money is tight, unless you're super rich, money is tight. I just think we should, we have to struggle to come up with what we got to do for the Bengals to honor that contract. We need to struggle and do what we got to do to make sure that they can get the promise. And I'm saying, there is no fund, we created a fund. And if we're gonna do 30-plus million dollars in upgrades, and then come over here and say, we can't get a homeowner a break, I kind of got a problem with that. And so it's gonna be coming up that, oh, we got to fix this, and we got to fix that, and you, you, you taxpayers will pay for it out of this fund that is sales tax, sales tax fund. I mean, anybody, you know, it has no age limit, anybody paying and buying stuff, it's a sales tax. And I just don't know why we can't use some of that money and give a little bit more, maybe, you know, phase them in, or bond the 30 million that we getting ready to do with them, and use this cash flow that won't make us go down in our, in our general fund. Use that so-called fund, bond the 30 million that they need, bond it, and then use the cash, some of the cash flow to give us a break back to the homeowner. So that was my, uh, recommendation. Again, I'm gonna bring it forward and may lose in here, but the homeowners, if we gonna honor the Bengal contract and say, our hands are tied, we need to be saying that about the homeowners. Our hands are tied, we got to do what we, what was said was going to be done. And so that's why I'm supporting it, and I think the timing right now with the property reevaluation, that's gonna be the all-time high, which will result in some level of higher taxes, some level. Um, I just think at this time, we should go with it and, uh, and then be able to use some other creative ways to, to be able to do those upgrades for the, for the stadium. So that's why, um, I cannot accept this number, um, because the price is higher, so your break ain't gonna be as high. So that's, uh, that's my, my take on it. But on Thursday, there'll be a vote. Um, so Thursday will be a, a vote. All right, item number three, Office of Youth Director Patton, welcome back.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to give a presentation on our Office of Youth, new office, uh, that began earlier this year with a vision from the board, uh, to really look at all of the services being offered in Hamilton County, across Hamilton County, including JFS as well as the administration. And so this, this report, uh, this presentation is going to reflect, uh, the number of youth that we've, uh, touched throughout 2023. I think you'll be surprised at just how broad, uh, of a net we cast in Hamilton County in the work that we do with youth around employment and, and other things. And so, uh, this is the first sort of comprehensive report. Our goal will be, uh, to report more frequently on, uh, how the progress is going, uh, next year in 2024. Uh, joined by our partners, Tower House, one of the contracted providers are here, uh, with some of the providers who, uh, are joining me today, so I'm glad that they're in the room as well. Uh, and then Sarah Adams and Sarah Gray will, uh, present certain aspects of the work that they're doing with the Office of Youth and also, uh, with the ARPA Fund. So I'll just share some preliminary information with you, uh, to start off. Uh, just, uh, I, I was surprised at this number. So when we looked at the total number of youth that we, uh, are touching, and we've touched so far, this number is through, I believe, October of 2023, so it may be a little bit higher than that. Uh, it encompasses our Comprehensive Case Management Employment, TANA funding, WIOA funding, uh, Hamilton County Youth Employment Funding, uh, beyond your imagination, uh, ARPA grants that were administered through the board as well. Almost 27,000 youth in Hamilton County have been touched by, uh, the work of our diligent staff, uh, and our contract providers in providing opportunities to youth, uh, for a variety of different, in a variety of different areas. So far, our youth employment program, um, uh, average wages, uh, for this period, 2 million, 2.3 million dollars, uh, associated with average, uh, average wages issued to youth, uh, through our contract, uh, services through Tower House and Harbor, uh, as well as an average, uh, per hour, uh, payment of $15.45 per hour. Uh, the areas on the bottom are just a graphic that kind of shows the dis, distribution of, uh, services provided, uh, in Hamilton County by zip code. Uh, and so what I'll do is I'm gonna bring up Sarah Gray, uh, she's gonna talk about... Uh, she's gonna talk about our youth employment program. And just to give some perspective for folks that are maybe watching, uh, through JFS, we have, uh, we do get funding through the state to provide workforce development, youth, youth programming. Uh, but we also, the board also has obviously had an opportunity to leverage ARPA dollars as well in that same space. And so the, really the direction for the board, of the board, was to make sure that, uh, we painted a picture that really described, uh, the breadth and scope of what Hamilton County does, uh, for youth in our community. And so Sarah is the, uh, the manager for our, uh, you, Office of Youth, and she has been, she's done a fantastic job pulling the program together in a very short period of time, uh, working with our partners. So I'll turn it over to Sarah, and she'll talk a little bit more about, uh, the, the youth that they've enrolled and they've touched so far in twenty twenty-three. Uh, and we will continue this work in twenty twenty-four. So Sarah.
So, so far, so far this year, we've served thirteen hundred and twenty youth, um, throughout Hamilton County in employment and credential services, which is a thirty-four percent increase from last year. We saturate ninety, sixty-nine percent of the county, um, which is, we've kind of blown up outside of that central area that we've always served. So it's, it's expanded much greater than it was last year. Um, we've employed twelve hundred and twenty-eight youth over, with over two hundred businesses throughout Hamilton County, most of those businesses being small businesses. And we have a couple of those individuals represented here today. We have Doron Smith with IDA. Um, he's here. They, they do a fantastic job with like behavioral redirection. Um, they're also a partnered employer. We have Felita Carbeeks here. She's, uh, Noise Outreach. She does a lot of different like camps and things like that for the youth, and also, um, provides additional like, um, emotional support and training to youth in her program. And then Michael Beck is here with us today. He is with the HCYE Tech Program, um, and he does a phenomenal job of providing, uh, ways of meditation, healthy diet, um, and supporting behavioral and emotional stability as well. So, um, those are just a handful of people that, um, are partnered with us for employment and training. So I wanted to highlight just some faces for you guys. And we've helped over a hundred and four youth obtain unsubsidized employment this year, which is a three-hundred percent increase from last year. And we've provided industry-recognized credentials to a hundred and seventy youth. A hundred and I think twenty-three of those youth received CPR and first aid training. Um, we talk about, uh, violence in the community. Our program does a lot to try to give youth another outlet, um, to reduce the violence in the neighborhood. We've also got a hundred and twenty-three boots on the ground to provide first aid training, or first aid to youth who may be experiencing violence in the community. We've paid, like he said earlier, over two million dollars in wages. Uh, that's helping small businesses to grow their business, as well as putting money into the community and into the hands of youth. And we've provided over fifty thousand dollars in supportive services and transportation for youth. I highlighted a handful of, uh, businesses. Some of these I talked about last year. Um, but this year, we've added some additional kind of city programming. Um, we partnered with Block Ministries, Black Boys in Tech, um, Avondale Development Corporation, um, College Hill Fundamental Academy, uh, Free Store Food Bank, uh, I Dream Academy, uh, Noise Outreach, The Heights Movement, and Timeless Recording Studios. Those are some new things. We did add some, last time I was here, we talked about adding entrepreneurial training and, um, podcasting, which is part of our credential and soft skill training. We have a small business training right now, um, that Tori and, uh, Renea Horton here from Tower House, that they are kind of heading up a, a small business training. That's a soft, just a soft skill training, but we are moving forward with GCMI and mortar to create, um, age-appropriate and skill-level-appropriate training for our youth fourteen to twenty-one, uh, with the, the, the youth that have completed the more difficult portion. At the end, their incentive will be that we will make the first financial, um, big financial step for them, and we will pay to register their business with the state of Ohio. We have, like I said, a hundred and twenty-eight CPR first aid trained youth. We have mechanical tech, medical assisting, EKG techs, uh, phlebotomy. We have someone in the police academy through our program, welding fundamentals. And we have a lot of youth that are interested in getting their manicure license, and so we have that going on as well. We did two media trainings this year, which was something we talked about at the last meeting. Um, we partnered with Ebony J. Nguyen, um, who provided a phenomenal, she couldn't be here today, she wanted to be, but, um, she provided a phenomenal program to the youth. Uh, they really, really enjoyed it. They gained a lot of confidence in speaking to other people, doing interviews, and things of that nature. And we also partnered with Easily Blessed Media. And they did the same thing, um, I think on about the same size scale, uh, just a little bit different. We had the HCYE training, uh, with Michael Beck, and the kids learned three D printing, robotics, um, professional development, personal development, me, uh, meditation, a whole lot of things that kind of, we don't think about when we think about employment. We, we don't think about how the personal, their personal lives may affect unemployment. So we like that, um, he made them dress up every, I think every Thursday, they had to dress up in, you know, professional attire and come to the class, dress up. And I thought that was a nice way to kind of introduce them to having to come into a business, uh, arena. Um, and we have some, uh, fourteen elements, which is a, it's kind of like a, a virtual job shadowing, but it does like professional development. There's, uh, professional developments, public speaking, branding, personal branding, and the kind of some small business, you know, um, like resume building and things like that included in that training. Uh, the after-school construction and small business and money management, those are kind of our introduction to the entrepreneurship program that we'll be launching next year. And so this year, we've done a lot. We, every year, we, we sit down and we talk about how we can make the program better and how we can, you know, um, leverage, uh, the spaces that we have to meet more youth and impact the community on a greater level. This year, we partnered with the five-one-three relief bus, and we were out, uh, we connected, I think, three hundred, over three hundred youth to employment and training through the five-one-three relief bus. Uh, we partnered with Ohio Means Jobs to do a couple of job fairs for youth, and those were very successful. We partnered them either with our program or if they were ready for employment, where there were other employers there that we could connect them directly to employment. So we started, we did it last year, but this year, we went a little bit further, and we started to do, um, more work site visits. So our providers at Tower House and Harbor, they do a great job of vetting employment sites. But what we are making sure of is that the employment site is getting the help that they need. The youth is getting trained. It's a safe environment, a healthy environment. Um, so we did a lot of pop-up visits with employers to get insight on, you know, what's working, what's not working, what the kids enjoy, what they don't enjoy, so that we can make the program a little better for them. We had last year, two applications that had to be completed. One was for TANF dollars and one was for the levy dollars that we are supported by. Um, and, and it seemed to be a little difficult to get all of the paperwork. And so we streamlined it and created one application that collected all of the data, so that it took that one extra barrier out of there, made it a little bit easier for youth to get connected and directly connected. So those applications come directly to JFS, and we send them to the providers with their approvals for TANF or levy dollars. So it made the process just a little bit easier, I think, overall. And it also kind of helped us to look at the data a little more in-depth. Let's see. We collaborated with Cincinnati Public Schools this year. That was big. Um, if you don't know, uh, the schools can determine whether or not kids get permits, work permits. So if their grades are not good or their, um, attendance is not good, they don't get a permit. And we serve a great majority of Cincinnati Public Schools. So I sat down with Derek Little earlier this year, and we talked about how we can make that, push that kind of to the side for our youth, because our goal is to help get them back into school. And we may be able to meet a need that the school cannot meet. And so it's kind of a, a win-win. We get the kids engaged with employment. We help support them with some additional funding, and then we get them back in school. So it helps the school. So our youth can go to the school board and request a work permit with no questions asked, um, as long as they're with the youth employment program. So that was a big deal this year. And we did update our branding with the Hamilton County logo. We are now the Hamilton County Office of Youth with the Youth Employment Program listed on the logo as well. You can see that at the bottom of the screen. And like I said, we added the media and entrepreneurship training, um, some things that we want to do in the future. Um, we have Tori, um, at Tower House, she proposed to me a Hamilton County Department Tour. And I thought that was a great idea. We talked about doing internships in the past, but we didn't get a lot of, um, a lot of interest in that. So we thought this was a good way for us to kind of connect to the HR departments and all of the departments. And there's a whole, it's probably three or four pages long that if you're interested in seeing the proposal, I'd be more than happy to get it to you. Um, but it talks about how we will, um, sign up youth based on, there'll be like three youth per sign up per day. And the HR departments of each department would be able to designate their days. And the youth would sign up, they would show up, they would tour the facility, they would have a hands-on activity, and they would be incentivized with a payment to go to this department tour. So it's a way to attract new employees to Hamilton County, as well as teach youth about what goes on in the county. So we're kind of excited to, to push that forward, um, in twenty twenty-four. And we are working on a digitized data collection system, so we can throw all of my spreadsheets away. I think they're sick of my spreadsheets. Um, so we're working on that. It's, it's probably closer to the end stages, so we'll have that up and going for twenty twenty-four as well. And we're, like I said, we meet every month or so to talk about how we can make the program better. We included a youth advisory board through Tower House this year, um, so the youth can tell us what, what they need, what's going on, what are the issues that we need to address, and how we can better promote the program. And they act as ambassadors for the program and take the youth employment program out to their friends, to their school, and talk about what we're doing and how great our program is. And then we're gonna continue our partnership with the five-one-three relief bus. It's been great. Um, we love connecting in the community. It's been a wonderful time. So we'll continue to do that and move forward with our entrepreneurship training. And then we talked about a youth and family day that will take place in the spring, I believe. Um, so we're planning for that as well and look forward to getting resources to the community for our youth. Okay, so I don't know that either one of my youth made it today. It was kind of short notice, but I have two, um, incredible youth, and I wanted to share their success stories. Um, Neil Robinson, he's eighteen years old. This was his first employment experience. Uh, they were, they were concerned, his employer was concerned with the placement because it was his first experience and he didn't really have work etiquette. Uh, and it was, he had some, some inappropriate workplace behaviors that, you know, were addressed. And, um, after working with him and training him and giving him the experience that he needed, um, he's become a model employee, and he was hired on to do social media, uh, management for the Saturday, Saturday Morning Vibe Cereal Bar. So we're excited for him for that. Um, he was hired, he was a direct hire after his, uh, ten-week employment experience. So, uh, when I asked him what to expect out of the program, he said hard work, dedication, and good customer service. Sarai Robertson, I invited her as well, but I don't think she could make it. Um, she was a part of our program in twenty twenty-two. She got connected with our program again in twenty twenty-three. Um, she was working through our program at an employment site. Um, and somewhere in the midst of that, she was a victim of gun violence and had to stop working. Uh, she couldn't do the tasks that were available at that employment site. So we got her connected to the Ebony J. Media Learning Center, and she did the Earn and Learn with Ebony J. She loved it. She ended up being the, um, the host of the event, of their last event. It was a really, she, she did a really good job. Um, and then she continued to work with Ebony J. after her training. Um, and when I asked her about her experience in the program, she said that everyone was just very helpful. So we always like to know what, how we're doing and what we can do to improve. So that was good for us to hear. Um, and I'm gonna bring Michael back up to talk about Beyond Your Imagination. So that was the end of the youth employment.
Just an example of, uh, hard work and dedication of growing, uh, the idea into something, uh, big over a two-year period. So, uh, I think that kind of reflects the presentation. Uh, I'm, I'm blown away too, just by the amount of work and effort, uh, that Sarah and her team, uh, and our team at JFS, but also our partners have undergone the last two years to grow the program. And, and so the other thing that, that I mentioned earlier is that we serve a, a lot of youth in the county, and Beyond Your Imagination obviously is also a board, uh, uh, strategic priority. And so, uh, we provide these reports periodically, but I thought it was important also just to talk about, uh, that work and the work that we've done so far, partnering with community organizations, uh, sending children that are in foster care or kinship care, for example, to the Taylor Swift concert, partnering with, uh, Metro, for example, to, uh, for, for them to provide us bus service to take the children from our agency to the concert and back. And so these are sort of strategic partnerships that have come up as a, as a result of, of Beyond Your Imagination. And so far this year, we've served one thousand and forty-seven youth through Beyond Your Imagination. Uh, we continue to get ideas shared with us, uh, through, uh, Commission's office and also from the community about opportunities that, uh, we can pursue, uh, to give these youth opportunities to really engage in enrichment opportunities, or just, quite frankly, opportunities that may not, uh, be readily available to them, uh, on a, on a regular basis. And so, uh, we have, uh, supported a hundred and twenty-four students with the Taylor Swift concert. This is just a snippet, by the way. Uh, Reds games, five hundred and eight youth participated, attended Reds, Reds games. The twenty twenty-three U.S. Open Semi-Cup Final with Intermi- Inter Miami and FC Cincinnati. You see where things are going with FC Cincinnati. So this was a huge, hugely important opportunity for youth. Uh, and Lionel Messi, the best soccer player in the world, was there. So we got to send ten youth there. We talked with, uh, FC Cincinnati, uh, and Jeff Birding to make that happen, and, and they were really great partners in making that happen. So we're happy to offer that as well. The Five Seconds of Summer, Summer Show, able to send twenty, uh, uh, youth there and utilized so far, uh, close to twenty-five thousand dollars in Beyond Your Imagination donations to support the initiative and to send youth to these events and more. And this is a, a, a program that's also funded, uh, through our, our Children's Services Levy. So just wanted to, uh, uh, bring your attention to that for the people watching to also understand the movement that's happening with Beyond Your Imagination, uh, and sharing opportunities with us to, to continue to, 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 uh, offer youth these opportunities. And so next, I'll bring up Sarah Adams, and she'll talk through, uh, the work that's been done related to the ARPA programming that also serve youth in Hamilton County.
I'm a little smaller than they are. I am happy to be here to talk about how ARPA funding has been utilized with the youth initiative. I know that was something really important to the board, to ensure that we were using ARPA funds to serve youth across Hamilton County. The first initiative that we had was workforce development grants. You initially really wouldn't think that that was for youth, but we did have two of our programs that were awarded funding that did actually specify working directly with youth. They have served six hundred and eight youth to date. This, um, grant was actually to expand existing youth-focused programs to have proven outcomes and then demonstrate effectiveness and connect residents to new careers. And as we know, it's important that youth are getting into these careers and understanding what their opportunities are at younger ages, so they can go ahead and get adequate care and make sure that they can get into the workforce, either straight out of high school with training, or making sure that they have the roads and avenues to go into the college career, if that is their choice. career if that is their choice. The next is our youth resiliency grants, is exactly how it sounds. It was used to expand existing youth resiliency programs to help overcome the impact that social isolation, students being home or not being in school, and the ability of what the pandemic did with related school closures and reduction in the extracurricular activities. To date, we've served 11,496 youth through these programs. And we issued 27 grants to local organizations, which was right around $3.9 million. This was one of our biggest initiatives under ARPA that we actually had for our youth programs. We also did our teen suicide prevention grants. This was used to expand existing teen suicide prevention strategies that have proven outcomes and address gaps and barriers to participation to increase awareness and support. As we know, through the pandemic, unfortunately, due to isolation, many kids are experiencing more isolation, more suicidal thoughts. And we want to make sure that here in Hamilton County, we have appropriate avenues and people in our schools to assist those people during those times. We served 4,318 and we issued five grants, which was right around $800,000 through those initiatives. The Inspire Grants, which is under the initiative of Commissioner Dumas. This initiative is targeted to our grassroots organizations. These are smaller organizations that sometimes have a harder time maybe applying for those bigger grants, having the resources to get that grant funding. But they really are, are people that are boots on the ground, serving our youth, they're in our communities, they are there, they know where those resources are needed, and doing just amazing things in our communities. They've served 5,209 to date with 47 grants issued. Initially, it was around $250,000, it was $232,000 that has went out. We do have another round of funding that is coming with $250,000. We are working diligently with our team. I would like to thank Alice Bledsoe, the program coordinator, working side by side with me through all of this and making sure this program is always up and moving. We are working hard to try to get this next round out and coming. So as soon as I have dates, that will be out to the board immediately so we know that they are going to keep this moving forward as we're trying to get this next round out and going. I have the pleasure of having a couple people with me today. Let's see if I mess this up. So Artworks Cincinnati is one of our youth resiliency grants that is doing amazing work in our community. And I have Jeff Sperry here with me today, the senior director. And I thought that there would be no one better to explain how this grant funding is helping the community than Jeff.
Thank you, Sarah, and hello commissioners and staff. Artworks did receive a youth resiliency grant, and we employ and engage more than 200 youth each year. And this grant helped provide equipment and supplies like painting vests and hard hats and scaffolding and paint and brushes and everything we need to do to beautify the area and transform neighborhoods. Also, it helped with our workforce readiness training, which we, the youth that we hire do more than just a job. They get workforce development, like public speaking, financial training, time management training. But probably the most transformational thing that this grant provided was a van. Artworks has never had our own van. We have rented vehicles, staff use their own cars and trucks to haul materials and students. So the white van in the upper left corner is the van that we purchased. And whenever Artworks has a white canvas, well, we're not going to leave it that way. So we hired an international, internationally known artist to create a design for us. It was also the artist that did the design for the mural on Seventh Street. It's just new this year, it's seven stories high, a geometric design. He also did the design for our van, which you can see, and then we hired youth to paint that van. And in the right picture, the van, it's not quite done there in that picture, but soon you'll be seeing it driving around all over Hamilton County going to job sites and mural projects. So thank you so much for the grant.
And next I would like to invite up Cincinnati Youth Collaborative. And today we have Amy Thompson, the president and CEO, and Marie Rogen-Goss, I'm going to mess up her last name because I always do, Chief Advancement Officer, to come and share what amazing work CYC is doing.
Thank you. Good to see you all. And I'm going to have a little bit of fun with you. I hope you don't mind. I was a camp counselor for most of my life, so that's what we do. I'm going to ask everybody, even folks in the room, if everybody will just close your eyes for a moment. Close your eyes with me. And I want you to think back when you were about 10 years old or maybe 15. Who was an adult in your life that helped you on your path? It was not a parent. Who was that person? All right, no napping. You can come back. Thank you. I ask us to think about that because I have a dream. I have a big mission and vision for Cincinnati. I want us to become a mentoring town, that every single young person in our region would have that consistent caring adult that would help them graduate with a pathway towards success. And CYC is on that path. We want to wrap our arms in partnership with great organizations like Artworks and many others to say, how can we do this? How can we ensure that every young person not, that they graduate and that they have a pathway? And, and that's what we're doing. So CYC, real quick. CYC is mentoring organization. We provide workforce training and development, college access, and individual one-on-one mentoring and group mentoring. So no fun slides, but little packets of great pictures. Sometimes that pops off and you can see some of these fun things. So why we came to you and needed some support is the, as you can imagine, COVID was tough on mentoring and young people. We've heard it time and time again. So through the social isolation, what they need is that connection, that group setting and connectivity. And so you'll see that in some of these pictures. So if you start, one of our programs is the Saturday Hoops Program. I know we've had speakers come down, you all, several of you have come down to speak and address the students. We are expanding, so thank you for the support. We're going to be expanding into Avondale. We partner with Boys and Girls Clubs. We partner with the rec centers to make this possible on Saturday mornings. Have over 800 or so students that are currently being served and a significant number of volunteers that participate, including teenagers that come to participate. So we're serving youth who are serving youth, which is great. Next page, if you look at the girls' clubs, we recognize that there is that kind of critical stage before teenhood, when girls really need a little bit of support as they head into that kind of 13, 14-year-old stage. So we are working with second through sixth graders and have girls' clubs in seven different schools. And this is a group mentoring model in that we have women who are placed in the different schools, meeting with them each week, teaching different life skills. Here's a fun fact. You are never too old to mentor. Our average age currently, and yes, we are recruiting because we recognize this is an issue, is 83 years old. We have a woman who is 93 years old who is a mentor in the girls' club. It is powerful and really, really inspiring what they are doing. We'll be expanding into Kilgore and some other schools as well. So we are so appreciative of the support. The next fun smiles are UC Med students. And just a couple days ago, we had a match party where we have 70 new young people who are now partnered with UC's medical students. And they stay with them for the four years that they are in med school. It's a co-design. We know med students become busy, so it's two people to one mentee. And they learn an awful lot about the medical field and many of them then become interested in, in medicine, which is fantastic. And another one I'm really excited about is our career-based mentoring model. And this is where I see us having a ton of potential to grow in our region. When we think about the in-demand fields and we think about so many businesses saying, how do I diversify? How do we reach people younger? This could be a solution. So we partnered with PNC, where we do a financial literacy series in our classrooms in the schools where we partner. And then we had 20 students who raised their hand and said, I want to learn more about the financial industry. And now it's a group mentoring model where once a month, we're over at the different branches, we're at the Freedom Center, we're at the Museum Center, doing activities around entrepreneurship, fun, team building, but also learning about a career path in the financial industry. We want to build that in many, many other pathways as well. So I get really, really excited about that opportunity. So big picture, the support from you all has just been invaluable. We have about 1,200, currently about 1,200 volunteers, about 1,000 students specifically in our mentoring program. We're serving overall about 4,000 students. So I could go on and on and tell you stats, but I will leave you with a quick story about the impact. One young lady, Mia, recently sent a text to her mentor that was forwarded on to me, and it says, "Thank you so much, Ms. Vanessa. God put us together for a reason. You are truly an angel sent from heaven. I appreciate everything you've done for me because without you, I don't know where I would be today. You have believed in me when no one else did. Thank you." And today, this young woman who couldn't find her way, she was not sure where she was going to go for college, she's now a student in nursing at NKU. So good stuff is happening. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
And that is the end of our slideshow. So if you have any questions for myself, Sarah Gray, Director Patton, we'd be happy to answer anything.
Thank you, Director Patton. You wanted to say something?
I just want to extend an offer for our visitors to say a few words if they'd like to. So Sarah's going to introduce someone.
Doron Smith of I Dream Academy has a few words he'd like to say about the Youth Employment Program and his partnership with that.
Commissioner Dumas, President Reese, and everyone on the panel. As mentioned, my name is Doron Smith. I'm the president and CEO of I Dream Academy Mentoring and Development. Been around for probably 16 years now. And to keep in step with all of the great works that JFS has been doing and bringing our organization into the partnership is, is just phenomenal. I mean, I, I'm just honored because there's nothing I could say after seeing the results coming through. And so our core role is to, as we say, first mentoring. But we focus also on the retention and the sustainability. As we serve as youth from seven to 18 years of age, and we know decision-making can sometimes get skewed at that, at that age bracket, and we're seeing results from that. But what we've had in honor of witnessing is one aspect of the program that took these youth, this core group of youth, for the employment development and the career pathway and created what's the Earn to Learn. And playing the Earn to Learn component, we were able to make healthy decisions or teach individuals how to make healthy decisions, work with behaviors that may get sidetracked. And the reason I say that is so important is because we can employ all we want, but retention on a job is critical. And what I've found, even through the mentoring pieces, that I've placed a numerous amount of youth at job sites that did not stay on that job site because of lack of disciplines. And so one of the roles that we assist in is transitioning the youth as a holistic body and being able to give them those work ethics, those employable skills, those critical thinking, the development pieces, as well as a long-term mentoring back out in the community. Now, the mentoring, as one of the colleagues out here said, mentoring is critical because there are times that we get into the lives of the youth out here that others won't. And so being able to partner with JFS from the onset to the employment piece to after to see the successes that we're seeing is just viable. And so as I Dream Academy continues to be a partnership with that, I see a lot of factors connected to that. One is prevention. A lot of potential youth, because of that, that pathway and that structure, I've noticed a lot of youth that comes to I Dream Academy through the program that has continued on with us in the mentoring capacity now on long-term and permanent positions at stores and organizations out here in the community with a lot more discipline and a lot more character. And most importantly, they have that relationship that's built from that, from the foundation that was laid when we first started the youth employment piece. So in wrapping it up, the JFS brought with us and my team an opportunity to also tie in and tap into the Hamilton County's growth. Because not being one of the larger agencies, we had an opportunity to come in grassroots, create our document, get our material together, and witness the outcomes that we're now seeing now. So we're honored for a number of reasons. But most importantly, the conversations that I have from youth that have started with the Talbot House, that have expanded the Earn to Learn and brings I Dream Academy into that program, went from a small number and, as Sarah was saying, grew phenomenally to where the feedback is now those same youth are just elated to be out in the community and still connected to something more long-term. Getting the youth from one point to the next and then leaving them, I don't find that successful. Being able to follow them through is the role that was able to be connected from a different compartment of the role that we play. And being able to monitor and help and assist in long-term future is, is what we're seeing. So as I Dream Academy hopes to have a much more collaboration with Talbot House, we see that we could be intervening in who knows what potential. Homicide, suicide, dropout, or whatever. So it's bigger than that for us. It's bigger than just the work part. It's a life also that was laid from the foundation of what we were being able to be blessed to be a partner with. So with that, thank you.
And next will be Tori Turner from Talbot House.
Thank you. I don't want to say much. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I have worked in workforce development for years, some, some years now. I'm not going to tell you how many. Double-digit years. And I have identified some barriers to employment, especially for our young people. Transportation is one of them. You can't get anywhere in Cincinnati. And the good jobs are outside 275. What are we going to do? But we are seeing an opportunity through Hamilton County Youth Employment to actually help with the transportation piece. We have some young men who are in a construction program. Got to have a car when you're in construction, got to. But they are being mentored in, in a way that motivates them to get a driver's license even, and then to go ahead and get a car through the incentives that they are earning through the program. That's huge, y'all. That's huge. And they are being inspired by the likes of Mr. Smith from I Dream Academy, Mr. Gamboa at the Tool Bank. They do a tremendous job, especially with these young men. And so I thank you for these funds to continue this type of work. We got a ton of stuff we're so excited about in 2024. I'm not going to even, not going to do that. Not going to do that to you. But I do want to say thank you for the opportunity to do all the things that we have done in the last year and a half. It's been a whirlwind, believe me. But it's fun. We, we are excited to continue and keep the money coming. We need cost money to do this. So, so keep it coming and thank you very much.
Thank you to all our partners. As you can see, this is a huge endeavor, a lot of partners, it takes a lot of work, takes a lot of financial resources, obviously, but we are happy to partner with committed individuals in the county that support our youth. And so hopefully, this gives the board and also the public the scope and the understanding of just how broad we serve the youth in the county and happy to answer any questions. of just how broad we serve the youth in the county, and happy to answer any questions that you might have related to it.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for the presentation. I want to say that, first of all, great job, super excited. One of the things I think is important is while we have voted on the money, we didn't just vote on the money. This board, we said we want to do something big for our youth. And each will get a chance to talk for themselves, so I'll just talk for myself. I thought it was important to have an Office of Youth, not just for employment, but to be able to pull together all of the tools, opportunities, funding with a vision, with a ROI report on what are we doing for youth. We had a lot of, you know, this silo, that silo, this one, that one. And then, we walk around, they say, "Well, you ain't done nothing for the youth." And me personally, my entire career, whether, you know, starting back my days at City Hall, we demanded it to be helping 2,000 youth every year employed, to my state, when I was on, at the state legislature, and we got additional funding, I fought really hard for 14-year-olds at that time because I said, "We must get our program to the youth before the street program gets to the youth." They're going to get a program. The question is, will we get our program to them? And the more we can show that doing the positive things, and we uplift the positive youth and make them the leaders, I'm just convinced, we won't be able to save everybody, but we'll be saving a lot more people, a lot more young people than we have. But a lot of times, we put the person as negative, and oh, man, we, every five seconds, they on the news, they on this. So, they say, "Oh, well, that's what I got to do to get attention." And so, we have to give attention to those and opportunities to those who want to do it the right way. And so, one of the things that I thought was important was to have an Office Umbrella of Youth. So when you come to Hamilton County, all of these different great programs that we might initiate or you might initiate, we're able to give, how many people did you really help? How many people did you really touch? And then, I also think is very important because we, as a county, the way we do it, we may give the money to Talbot House, or CYC, or other organizations that's already doing this, but don't take it for granted that, you know, this is our program, this is what we're doing for youth, but we're giving to organizations that can get on the ground, that are on the ground. And so, I wanted that to be clear, because I run into people sometimes, "Yeah, I ain't did nothing for youth," and then they got paid from the program, we done funded, you know, but they didn't know. So, this gives us a chance to see what we've done good, what we can redo. And Office of Youth, last year, we had just a couple slides, and it was one person. And I'm excited that you took the feedback that we had, you done tripled, you done come back, you done partnered, we done took down the silos. Every youth program that we got, you got the information, it's fallen under your leadership as our Director of Jobs and Family Services. But I want to highlight some stuff because people that are watching at home, watching at home, that I'm super excited about. You said our reach, total youth enrollment, 26,679. That's huge. That's huge. And it has all the different ways we've been able to touch youth, whether it's a grant, whether it's youth employment, whether it's a mentorship. We even had boxing classes, cooking classes, youth resiliency, $3.9 million we took of our ARPA money and said, "No, we got to help the youth." And we diversified that with different grants and opportunities to be able to help more youth get into these programs. We even sponsored summer camps, which is too expensive for people. They got summer camps we paid for. We diversified. I'm super, super duper excited about who we've been able to help, how we've been able to help. Then employment opportunities, a kid care, back when I was in, you get three opportunities. You got to go on there, if it's boring, you just got to go and be with a boring office. No, you to get them all these different opportunities that they have. Out at Lincoln Heights, they got the Heights Movement. They're out there planting and gardening and learning that. And Mr. Beck, hablo español en boquita. You know what I'm saying? And you're still at it. You've been at it for years and been able to help our young people. And then, to be able to get credentials. Now, I do want this to increase. I want us to focus a little bit more on credentials. Because I think if we can get many youth coming out and they're certified in something, if they're allowed to be notaries, I don't know if they're allowed, but whatever they're allowed to do, that will help them further on because they'll be able to do stuff. But you got on here, they'll be certified in certain credentials, CPR, and, man, you got some STNA. I mean, we have done some stuff. Police academy, pharmacy tech, Lord knows, we need people in the pharmacy department. You go through Walgreens now, you can't halfway get your medicine, they looking for people. And then, you went into small businesses. You went into my field, communications. Everybody wants to have a podcast now, right? And you got Ebony J Media, who also worked with our small business office director at Alloy, and her now has her own studio. And see how all that turns? We got our office of small business, you helped her, she's got an office, and then she comes back and help our youth. Those are the kinds of things I just can't stop talking about it. It's so exciting. And then, like I said, these youth resiliency grants and the testimonies. Now, we need a video. Everything got to be on video now. Nobody's reading as much.
We have a video commissioner. We'll send you guys the link to some testimonials from some of the youth that participated, so.
Get us the video so we can, we want to share the good news. We share bad news, let's share the good news. And then, I'll let Commissioner Dumas talks about her Beyond Imagination and the grant program for grassroots organizations, which is phenomenal. And then, the ARPA, I just want to say this one more time, people are watching at home, you got to say it seven times for people to get it, but ARPA, youth served for workforce development grants, 608 youth were served. Now, this outside of the other program. We issued grants of almost 300,000 there. Youth resiliency grants, I talked about that, 11,496 youth served, and we gave almost $4 million to that. Teen suicide, huge right now, huge. Teen suicide prevention grants, going to help 4,318 people. We're talking about saving lives. And we gave over 800,000. And then, we've got the Inspire Grant, which I know Commissioner Dumas will talk about, 5,000 youth, over 5,000 youth have been helped. And Art Works got a van that's going to keep going around for years to come from this investment. So, I'm super excited. Y'all doing a fantastic job. Keep doing the job that you're doing. And I just want to end again, 26,679 young people have been helped under this, under these initiatives. So, fantastic, fantastic job, and super proud of it. I'll open it up to Vice President.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you all for being here. The partnerships are what make this work, and without you all doing what you do, we don't have anybody to turn to to help us with the youth in our community. So thank you all for being here, and thanks for telling us, giving us a little bit more meat on the bone as to what you do. So, I wanted to, I've got a couple specific questions, but I'm going to ask my more general question first. So, we noted that, you know, we're, JFS has been doing work with youth for many years.
Correct.
And so, this board said, "We've got an opportunity with the American Rescue Plan dollars, by way of the federal government, to do more, to increase the number of youth that participate in our programming, to expand the programs that we have." And so, it was a fantastic opportunity, and we, as a board said, the youth in this community have to be one of the major priorities. And so, we put some, what I would categorize as transformational dollars into youth employment, making sure kids have mentoring, mental health services, because we know there's a need. The question I have is that, that ARPA money was one-time money. And so, as we talk about the success of these programs and the partnership, because it's, you know, the county's been doing some of this work, but we've got, brought in some new partners here. You all have done a really nice job, and I've got the sheet open
Yep.
... of some of the partnerships that you have been able to create with some of these ARPA dollars. The question I have is, how do we continue once that money goes away? And how do we, how are you thinking about, as the Director of JFS, the sustainability of what we know is great work and transforming young people's lives in this community? How do we start to think about the next step?
I think the data helps, obviously. The presentation today from the providers who got funding from ARPA gives us sort of an indication of what can be done and the amounts necessary to make that happen. We started a little bit with the levy, children's services levy on, for some of the youth in JFS that are above 200% of poverty. So we wanted to make sure we capture beyond what TANF allowed in terms of income requirements with WEOWA and TANF eligibility, youth that would come to us and be able to participate that was, that were over the income limit there with the levy dollar. So, I think part of it is having a larger conversation about how flexible those are, how we can use them, and really being thoughtful about the investments that we make there in addition to, obviously, what is necessary to make sure kids are safe in, either in a kinship home or in a foster home, and the costs associated with that. So I think there's still some examination of what exactly, what form that's going to take. But beyond that, you know, I'd love to have a larger conversation about how we could continue to maintain the reach that we just presented to the board today, given the outcomes that we know exist and the need that exists in the community for all of these programs.
Well, I do hope that, I don't know in what length of time, a year's time or whatever it is, once we have in front of us, you know, we've got these great programs, we know what the impact is, how do we sustain this? And how do we look towards the levy? And, I mean, that seems like the most obvious funding source for something like this, with some of the programming that we've talked about. But you're the Director of JFS. So I leave it to you with your expertise to better guide that. But I'd hope we are going to have that conversation because this is a real opportunity for us to think about JFS and that levy in a way, because that levy has primarily, as you say, it was put in place to keep kids safe in this community, and to make sure that if a child had to be removed from their home, we were doing everything we could to make that home safe before that even happened. But once that did happen, we had the stipends for kinship care and, you know, for the foster families, and so primarily, that's what the voters voted for, is to keep kids safe. I would, though, argue that keeping kids safe in this community is probably all the other stuff you just talked about, especially when it relates to mental health and opportunities for kids in the community. That is what keeps kids safe in the community. And I'm just going to plug, the Commission on Women and Girls has identified this as well over the last few years, as a top priority to pay some attention to the mental health needs of kids in the community because COVID really did a number on kids relative to isolation and some of the things that they're still suffering from. So I'll look forward to doing that. I don't know at what point you would think it would be appropriate to come back in and say, "Okay, this is how it's going with these ARPA dollars, this is all great." It is, it's great. And this is how we intend to come to the board for some direction as to how to sustain it.
Absolutely, be happy to do that. Thank you.
I'm going to get to my more granular questions, I only have two. Actually, one's a comment. So, the flexibility, I just want to say, because of the testimony that you provided, when we've got a young person that is not succeeding in this space, then we pivot to this space. And we ask the partners in the community, whether it's an employer or an agency, to pivot with us. And so, I was really struck by the flexibility of staff and the partners to say, "Not everything we do is going to work for every single youth." And so, we need to be flexible with these kids to make sure that the fit is there. So I was just struck by that, and I wanted to compliment you on that. Also, you, again, because some of this is ongoing programming through JFS, but some of it's new, I'm wondering, what is the mechanism to track some of the success stories related to the young people and how they, if they're being mentored by kids from the UC Medical School, how does that translate and what happens to those kids? So we could better understand kind of the long-term impact of some of these investments.
I'll speak a little bit to that, but I think it comes down to her technology and the ability to make sure we have the capacity to track this and beyond the spreadsheet. But the other thing I'll say is that I think the idea of trying to align the work of the county and JFS is a year and a half old, and we need to, I think you're absolutely right that comprehensively from the Office of Youth, there needs to be some structured way of capturing outcomes for kids and reporting it in a common system. And so, we're at the beginning of that conversation. But I'll let Sarah talk a little bit about what she currently does, and I think she did mention in the presentation, the development of a way to make sure that we can more easily track dollars spent, kids served, reducing duplication, and making sure the outcomes are reflected of what we want to see through our partnership with the contract.
Currently, I have a system of spreadsheets that's probably too large for the system to handle, so it's broken down into subsets of information. So, I track from both providers, I get weekly reports. Those reports tell me who's doing what, were they terminated from their employment, were they a direct hire to their employment, what credentials they received, and things like that. So the goal of the system that I'm working to create is that all of the information will plug into that system. We look at other programs. So, if they're receiving CCMEP services, we will look into the system and see if they're receiving that. I think one of the biggest things to note is that the Office of Youth was intended to be a resource hub. And so, there's communications between all of the organizations so that we can track those outcomes. I know the people that are here today, I talk with them regularly about, you know, what's going on and how things are going, and who's got what going on and what needs are out there so that we can continue that track. But a lot of our youth, they do come back. They come back year after year after year to get more skills and get more information and get more knowledge. And so, I think the biggest thing is, because everything's kind of funneling into that Office of Youth and we're able to track what's going in what direction, being able to follow through and see, where do you go from here? How are you getting there? You know, the credentials are a big piece, being able to follow the traction of the credential. Yes, you got your credential, so what's next? And working those steps with them. We're not just credentialing them and sending them on their way. We want to create that career plan. So the career, that's one of the biggest things that was in our RFP, was that a career plan needed to be in place for each youth. So, they have direction, and they have someone following up behind them. Our providers do a really good job of jumping in and checking in with people, sending out mass emails, connecting. And so, because our hub is so large, it does need a system. So there's only so much that I can track on a series of spreadsheets, but that system will allow me to track much, much more and be able to capture those duplicated services and see, you know, maybe a youth does need those duplicated services. Maybe they needed to be in the youth employment program and they needed the suicide prevention. You know, seeing where they overlap and how they overlap, to see what the greatest need is. Because we may have, we may see trends of this youth, they were a part of the employment program, but they, you know, in this area, this location, we had six youth that needed the employment program and the suicide prevention program. So what's happening in this part of the community that requires those extra services? And be able to pinpoint really what's happening in the community based on that information. And I think our Youth Advisory Board helps with that as well. So, I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate it. That's it? Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to make a few specific comments and then some general ones. I think it's great that you have the Youth Advisory Board. That's awesome, because young people know what they want and need. We may have to tailor it a little bit. The fact that expansion of the youth employment, 69% of Hamilton County is saturated. I know we were saying normally, the services that are I know we were saying normally, the services that have been given have been within the city limits, and we want to expand in everything that we do. So that's extremely important. I'm impressed with the diversity of employment opportunities. It's just, I'm trying to hold my peace really, because I'm overwhelmed. So the diversity of employment opportunities, the entrepreneurship, the training, the certification that you guys are doing. Our youth are our future, that's an old cliche, but it's so... Right now, our youth are just needing direction. They're needing to be appreciated. They're needing, need to be listened to. They have a lot to give. And I'm going to go back to that number. 26,679 youth that we've impacted. It just makes me wonder, how many lives have we saved? How much hope have we given? How many suicides did we stop? How many young people now have money in their pocket and they don't have to go out and rob people? They can have the things that they need or try to work and not do schoolwork because they're trying to bring money home for the family. They have now these work experiences that they can be all that they want to be as we undergird them and give them their basic needs. I think about the mental health services that we're providing. I started in 1977 as a licensed social worker and client right-to-advocate for a state mental hospital. And I knew then that was my passion, that youth were my passion. And I've continued up until this day to make sure that everyone, but especially youth, are listened to and that we meet their needs. Beyond Your Imagination was one of the programs, because I thought about, as concerts come here and movies come here, and easy for me to buy a ticket. Well, wanting our foster kids and our adopted kids to know, you're no different. You're just in a different situation. And I want you to experience what I experience, what other people experience, so that when you come to school, people don't have to tell you about Taylor Swift, you were there. And then the Inspire Initiative that I came up with is because I think of all these mentors that are out there in the community, keeping the fabric of our community together and giving these young people hope so they don't want to pick up a gun, they don't, they want to do the right thing. And I felt like our commission, our Board, needed to give them just a little push, just to give them a little $5,000 for whatever group it was that you applied for, to try to have the mentor say, I can't do this anymore. You know, we have dancers that are great, and all we need is a registration fee, and we don't have it. So we lose our little girls, we lose those little boys that are playing football. So that was a bigger picture that I brought to my colleagues and they supported it. I noticed in here it said Inspire has impacted, I think, 5,200 young people. And so in our second round, it's going to be over 6,000. So right now, it'll be 11,000 young people that we have impacted through this initiative. And then there's a third round coming. But words cannot express my appreciation to these partners. And it's not easy, you guys know that. Words just... Words cannot express what you guys are doing for these young people and the difference that you're making and the difference that we're making. So we don't have to keep looking on the television and seeing these little young kids shooting people. And we don't know why, there's all kinds of reasons, but we got good kids out there, and they need a nudge too. So I just want to thank you guys for what you're doing, continue to do it, and we need to do more of it. And this report is just awesome. It's just awesome what you guys are doing. And I think I'll end it at that. I have other initiatives coming forward, they'll be hearing more about it. But if everybody could just, each one, teach one. Everybody just do whatever you can do as a mentor, take one and make a difference in their life so they can grow up to be positive, effective adults. This world would be so different, just absolutely so different. And we're trying to do what we do, with the monies that we have and ideas that we have to make a difference. And we're truly doing it with our youth. This youth employment is not just for the summer. Like, a lot of people do this, it's year-round. So as was said earlier, we put everything together into one office so we can better coordinate what's going on, and it's working. So thank you all, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your presentation, thank you for your work, and we're just excited for the future. Thank you. Our last presentation today is the Port Site Readiness Grant. Alyssa Johnson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's nice to see you again. We appreciate the conversations we've had leading up to this and the continued support from the Commission for the Port's work in site readiness. We had previously provided a memo that outlined this project specifically and have a few slides to share with you today to articulate this opportunity and answer any questions you might have. But, and I don't know if those slides are...
Yep.
Here we are. Perfect, okay. So this is a parcel that the Port acquired using Patient Capital Notes. And the Patient Capital Notes was a program that the Port created a number of years ago that's backed by Patient Capital private sector investors, which was money that we used for the acquisition. So this is a property that we already own. It's total 49 acres and it's located primarily in Evendale. It is a multi-jurisdictional project where some of the infrastructure that we'll talk about today and that could use support of the Site Readiness Fund is also partially located in the city of Redding. This parcel, again, we acquired it in kind of two separate transactions from Formica Corporation and GE Aviation. And this is a part of the Port's strategy to acquire and identify large tracts of land to attract advanced manufacturing and job creation back to Hamilton County. And still working on data from Redding, Cincinnati that our site inventory on large-scale tracts of land is really still quite low. This particular parcel is also, we feel geographically, leverages still some of the investments that you've also made in projects like the former Dow Chemical Plant, just, you know, a handful of miles to the south of this. And then also the Drake and the Carousel Hotels, both of which are in active redevelopment and getting close to finishing up some of the work there. So this particular parcel is been, from a site development standpoint, I think is pretty easy in terms of just the overall land, the big land parcel itself. The challenge here is that the property is inaccessible. Right now, we have a three-year temporary easement with Formica Corporation to access the parcel to do site readiness work when we are funded and able to move forward with that activity. But by and large, from a long-term development perspective, you cannot access the parcel from any direction. It is landlocked either by Formica Corporation to the north, some railroad infrastructure in the Mill Creek on the two or three other sides. So we have been working through site access alignments. One of the things that we did during our acquisition due diligence was study about six alternatives in a variety of ways and varying degrees that presented either benefits or challenges. And there was one particular plan that became evident would most support the property. And the total estimated kind of investment in putting that infrastructure in, which would be an improved intersection at Cooper and Redding Road. Also, just kind of some of the roadway leading into what would be a bridge, which would be required to cross the Mill Creek and then be able to access the site. So we kind of a loose price tag of about $8.4 million. And the funding that we're requesting today is to actually kick off engineering and design. We've started conversations already with other funding partners from OKI. We have some conversations lined up with the Ohio Department of Transportation to further explore larger funding that would support construction, that would support, you know, some of the other elements to actually create access and open up this parcel. The funding from the Site Readiness Program would allow us then to be able to truly define the budget, articulate the need, and be able to apply for funding and some of those other partners and programs that would be available to us, including Jobs Ohio, OSIP, and then potentially some federal funding from the Economic Development Administration, which is something we're looking at exploring currently. So I wanted to, I guess I have to... On the next slide, share this map, which I guess might look a little hard to read. The red is the actual parcel, and this is something that we developed in conversation for the EDA, for the Economic Development Administration around some of their funding. One of the really important considerations for their investment is how does a parcel like this encourage development and/or job creation opportunities in adjacent economically distressed communities? And their metric in utilizing and evaluating that is in poverty. So we had created this map to share with the EDA, but we thought it was a great representation that a parcel of this magnitude in such close proximity to other communities like Redding, Lachlan, Lincoln Heights could really play an active role in drawing from workforce development in those areas and providing job opportunities. You can see on the map, I'm not sure if you can read it, but hopefully in your hand, you can see that the poverty rate in Lincoln Heights is over 64%. In Redding, it is just above 17%, with Lachlan at nearly 29%. And these are all recent numbers from the census that, again, we've shared with the EDA to perpetuate our case for their potential investment in this property. This third slide is just a graphic that, you know, we've developed just to kind of show generally the concept of how we would look at accessing the site. The site improvement funds would be utilized to do some design and engineering planning for the intersection at Cooper and Redding and actually open up the signalization with the consideration that there will be, you know, tractor or trailer or traffic. This would be, you know, promoted for advanced manufacturing and employee access. Then ultimately, the roadway, and you can kind of see where theoretically we have that lined up to enter the site, and then actually the bridge crossing itself. Trying to be a good steward of all of our funds, we want to also be able to consider how we would leverage this to address any Army Corps of Engineer issues that will be required before we could start construction on any element probably outside of the intersection. And then also any consideration for actual site padded, you know, site pad readiness work on the parcel itself. Then the last slide is just to show a general rendering. It's just a concept of what, you know, we like to always evaluate our highest and best use against the metrics that we developed. Aggressive metrics in site readiness for job creation, a targeted payroll of $65,000 a year. What is the maximum footprint we can get out of a site like this that would generate, you know, tax dollars or attract capital investment? Excuse me, so we have some of those targeted, you know, that the property itself could yield to support this kind of development moving forward. So we just thought it's always nice to show our future-forward thinking, where we hope to be in this kind of, you know, the outcome of a development of this opportunity. So wanted to just open this up for questions. And, you know, hopefully, this is something that, again, works to achieve some of the job creation and attraction of advanced manufacturing into our communities throughout the county.
Thank you very much. Can you go back to, how much are you asking?
The request is for $750,000.
Seven fifty. I'll open it up, Vice President Drew House.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Yeah, we've had an opportunity to discuss this in the past, so I really don't have a lot of questions other than to say that this site readiness investment from the county, I think, is so important to allow these kinds of opportunities to move forward. We used to rely on other funding, primarily from the state, for site readiness. Some of that money dried up, and we had a slowdown, you know, of these opportunities and these properties that we were able to have ready so that when an opportunity does come forward for light manufacturing or something else, we've got a site that we can, and we can say yes. Because so often, we have to say no, because we don't have a site that's ready. And never mind, some of them are the wrong size, they're not big enough or whatever, they don't have utilities. And so it is so important that we position ourselves in this way so that when an opportunity does, you know, crop up and someone does reach out, that we in Hamilton County have the opportunity to say yes. Yes, please come here, locate here, create jobs here. And the other piece, and I think you mentioned it, not only is this going to impact the neighborhoods that are near it by way of providing jobs and those kinds of opportunities to the folks that live there, it also capitalizes on the investments the county has made in this area. Because we've made a lot of investments, as you look at that map, in all of these jurisdictions. And so we are just building on the investments we've already made through some of these different funds. So I'm grateful for the presentation, I'm happy to support this, and I am grateful that you and others at the Port, your team, are thinking strategically about how we compile pieces of property to put us in the best position to say yes to folks that want to come in and create jobs here. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. As I look at, I think you're at last, next to last sheet, and you talk about the proposed bridge, proposed access road, and improved intersection. So it impacts Evendale and Redding. Have you talked to them? Where are they on it? Have they given you a letter of approval? Are you waiting for us to make a decision?
That's a great question. And I, in early acquisition due diligence, we had conversations with both jurisdictions. It is interesting because the intersection of Cooper and Redding, I think, technically sits in Redding. The economic benefit, if you will, of the parcel itself does sit in Evendale. So we've had some early discussions with Redding about what that looks like. You know, no commitment, if you will, because I do think in part they're waiting on us to be able to present them a plan and then understand what their role could be. I mentioned earlier that these funds are actually, maybe not these funds, but the stage of the project which these funds would support is required. We had even a phone call yet this week with OKI to explore some of their funding opportunities. And a requirement is to be able to present some percent of completeness, a 10, 20, 30% completed engineering plan, design plan, which is what these funds would help us achieve, in order to make application for that. We did have initial discussions also with the city of Evendale. And then similarly, we'll need to convene both of those jurisdictions to bring forward with them a plan about funding and resources and, you know, what their role of that could be. But, you know, by and large, I think it's safe to say that we hear from all of our community partners, and especially in Redding, understanding the success of Dow Chemical, you know, and that all... What is the saying? All boats rise at the tide or something like that? I'm not very poetic, but I think you get the point. But, you know, I think there is some spirit of collaboration that they recognize this is a real benefit. So more to come on that, but there have been very early introductory conversations. The city of Evendale did also have to approve a lot split in order for us to acquire the property, which they did back in '21, I think, 2020, 2021. So part of that conversation was also saying, you're going to have a parcel with no access, how do you resolve that? And then we introduced some of the concepts with them at that time.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's all I have.
Thank you. I think that's important because one of my things is I don't want it, you know, just because we earmark $2 million out of the general fund every year. Like I said, the state dried up. Sometimes when the state dry up, that's it. We don't, we just had a conversation about that. How do we sustain something? But I don't want it to be a takeover. I don't want the Port inviting themselves. I like it better when the people have invited the Port, said, hey, we need your help. That's how it used to be. But I don't want, just because we got $2 million sitting around, that we're just going in the neighborhood and say, we'll get back to you after, you know, we're going to buy it, we're going to tear it down, and then we're going to get with you. If that's the case, I can't support putting $2 million every year for that. I liked it better, originally, you guys would say, these people invited us in, and they want to do something with this property. And we have all these tools, government tools, that they don't have, and then we've got the $2 million. I don't want it, we out and we... I don't want it, we out and we just, we gonna take, you know, we gonna take the property and then we gonna get with you and say what you want to put on it. So I do think for me, I need to have a little more cushion in knowing that these folks aren't just out there. And, and maybe they are in, I'm just saying, I think that's a good point that was brought up. The other thing is when we talk about jobs, I remember I was at the state, people would always say, we got jobs, we got jobs. I said, I need to see the zip codes. Jobs for who? And that's my question with these projects. I'm not just a blanket jobs. If there's some people coming from Indiana, coming in, getting the jobs, or Kentucky getting the jobs, that ain't, that didn't do nothing for us, even though we don't collect income tax. The people you showed me poverty, and I need to see where, what we're doing impacts helping them get out of poverty. So are these jobs that people in Redding could do, people in Lincoln Heights could do, are these specialized jobs that you'd have to go get, you know, $50,000 in debt to get a degree to try to apply for the job? So I want to dig a little deeper. And if they are, I want to be able to say that, hey, we created X amount, we, it was 64% poverty and because of what we did, it went down to 45%, just hypothetically. Because a lot of times we use those figures, poverty, that's been happening and I'm not saying you all are doing it, but it's become a trend now. You get the money off of poor people, but then you create something that kicks out the poor people, you know? And, you know, I want to stop that. We come in and say, oh, we need to do this because they're so poor over there. And then you come in and build 700, not you, $700,000 condos off of the poor people's money. We gonna change poverty. You changed poverty, all right. You picked up the poor people and got them out of there. So I would like to, before we vote on it, if there's something that you have from those communities, and you mentioned one or two, that would make me feel a little more comfortable. But I want to just say in the future, I don't want to put $2 million in a budget and you go into areas that people don't want you. You know, I want them to invite you in and you say, hey, I got this and I'm able to help you. And it's more of a partnership.
Yeah, and it definitely has been a partnership, I think specifically to Commissioner Dumas' question on the status of this, the infrastructure component. In the acquisition process, pre-acquisition process, we did meet with Evendale. We've talked regularly about their economic development goals. How does this play into this? Is this a site that supports one end user? Is it a site that supports multiple end users? What are the needs of the community? And, you know, likewise, like I said, we'd have had some initial conversations with Redding. Those are a little bit different because the parcel does physically sit in Evendale. So those definitely are still really important conversations for us. And, and those communities also recognize that the economic development benefit, I mean, there's a 49-acre parcel that's completely inaccessible that could generate economic revenue to either Evendale, the county, and the, and draw from the labor shed that is in the communities that are adjacent to it. And I think that we've talked before about the proponents of manufacturing and how that particular industry requires less specialization. There definitely is a spectrum of, of jobs and employment that is specialized. And then there is a, you know, there are, I think, data to support the fact that you can, it is a wider range of employment opportunities for number, you know, variety of individuals that can access manufacturing as an industry overall. We'd be happy to share some of that.
Yeah. Where do they live? Do they come in and then they out in Westchester? You know, that doesn't help us. My only thing is the mayor of Evendale, he's very, he knows the process. So he wouldn't be somebody just sitting down and, I mean, if this was something important, he usually come and bring the deal to us. So I just wanted to make sure that, and I was just another capital saying, he never mentioned this project. I'm just saying, you know, we worked with him on a number of projects, this wasn't mentioned. So what I'm looking for is the partnership, not the we going in telling you in your area, this is what needs to happen and we just happen to have money laying around so we can do it. So before it used to be the, it would be the mayor contacting y'all or contacting us and saying, hey, I got to get this, this thing needs to be, and I can't do it, port less, I'm partnering with the port and they're going to help me and we're going to work together. But now it's like we're going out finding stuff and not, you know, and that's an active mayor. That is not a mayor that don't know what's going on. He ran everything up in the state house. So I just want to put a caution button on that as we're moving forward because I don't want, just because we got money sitting around, and obviously we got money sitting around, you want to use it because we got money sitting around. But that's not what I think it should be. I think it should be the mayor of Lincoln Heights calling you, as they've done, and say, hey, we trying to do something and port, you got all these tools and now we got a partnership. Or Evendale mayor calling you or Redding mayor saying, hey, we got a project, we want to work together. And then we come in, not, you know, we riding around and we gonna just buy the land. That's kind of my...
I think it's, I think we have been working, you know, and, and trying to approach those in, in the spirit of partnership. So we, we echo that sentiment of, you know, its importance for sure and have had more direct conversations recently with their economic development director and staff that recognize the importance of, of, you know, those continued conversations with electeds.
Okay. Thank you. What do we do with this, Mr. Luda?
So commissioners, this will be on the agenda by leave for, for Thursday. So there's, there'll be a by leave item that will approve this agreement as well as some other site readiness allocations that the board has been apprised of over the past couple of weeks. That'll all be on for Thursday as one by leave.
Okay. Now, from the, how much money will be left? Is that everything?
I think with the, with the three projects that we're aware of, I think that's the full $2 million that's in that fund right now.
All right. I was hoping something would be left over. But okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thursday, all right. Okay. Anything else? All right. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House? Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.